Good evening. I would like to call the October meeting of the Cranston City Council to order. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilman Lanning?
Present.
Councilwoman Hopkins?
Present.
Councilwoman Stichels?
Here.
Councilman Boyd? Present.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Present.
Councilman Fivickio?
Present.
Councilman Fivickio?
Present. Good evening. To get the meeting started, we have public acknowledgements and commendations. The mayor has graciously blessed his presence tonight in each chamber, so I will turn the floor over to him. Thank you so much, Council President. You know, it gives me great privilege to come in front of the city council to recognize a stellar employee who's been with the city for a long number of years. You know, Lynn Ferney, who's sitting in the second row over there, has been with the city for well over forty years, and we can't thank her enough for her years of dedicated service, her commitment to pursuit of excellence, and her position as a senior planner for the city of Cranston in our Department of Planning. But most importantly, Lynn's done one of those individuals who always goes above and beyond her job. You know, one of the things that I love about Lynn is she's always, always making sure that she tries to preserve the integrity and history of our city, whether it's, you know, her historical work in that planning position with the Historical Commission, the Cemeteries Commission, and everything else. She really has always gone above and beyond her normal title of senior planner, and I always feel that it's important to recognize, you know, invaluable workers with a commitment to service who have sadly decided that she wants to transition off into her next phase of her life. So Lynn, you know, I want, if you may come up here, I would love to present this citation to you on behalf of all the residents of the city of Cranston to thank you, and we want to also wish you good health, great adventures, and our sincerest congratitude and very best wishes on all of your future endeavors. We are sorely going to miss you, and I know our planning director, Peter Laporta, has already started missing you, and so have all of us, because not only for what you did, but just being a joy to be around, and I know your love for not only the city, but also your passions, sharing what Robin, your love for animals and writing, all of that really have made it a wonderful atmosphere in City Hall, and we certainly miss you as a person, not only just as a colleague. So congratulations, Lynn, and I hope you enjoy your time here.
I actually only have one thing to say, and it was Mark Twain who originally said this quote, and he certainly knew what he was talking about. What he said was, "If you find a job you surely enjoy, you'll never work a day in your life." And that's what I found that my job to be at City Hall was in this planning department all these forty years, and I thank the city for giving me the opportunity to hire me forty years ago to pursue that dream. Thank you very much.
And I got so excited to honor Lynn that I forgot to start the meeting off with Pledge of Allegiance. So would anyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I am the president of the United States Center, and to a brother of course stands on a nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. Under public hearings, I have four names on the list, actually five names on the list. Two have stated they'd like to talk about the Paw Sox, and one on gun control in schools. The Paw Sox is not before us tonight, it's going to be sent to committee, so we have a second section of public speaking on that later in the evening, so when I announce a public speaking on any docket that matters, I will call those three names. But I do have Ken Picusson to talk about Sancho's. Come up and point, Ken. Please help. What law were you talking about tonight?
No law. I came to talk about the cemetery in Cranston against the programs.
Okay. That's part two, part two of public speaking, so we'll get through the business of the night, and then when we'll have a second time. And then Annette Bourne on 101703 and 101704, those head numbers, you have the ordinances, so those are, again, those are introduction to new business, you'll have to wait until the second piece of the meeting. So anyone to speak on anything that's coming before us tonight, any docketed items, or just on here?
Thank you very much, Council President, and members of the council. We're later in the docket under election of city officials. There's an appointment for the Board of Campsers. First of all, I'd just like to, thank, said I'm very appreciative of the Democratic State Committee for getting this to us right now, the camps in the parks working on a lot of very important issues that require inactive and full board. That said, I do want to say that the appointment that is being made tonight, the person that held that seat for the last eleven years was Ed Lemoine, who was the longest-serving member of the Board of Campsers over the course of the last two decades. And I would just like to state for the record that when I did start in that position in January, I was registrar, Ed was incredibly gracious, he was absolutely a wealth of historical information and knowledge, and he provided me extensive guidance and support throughout the entire course of the year. Of course, he served us the last six years as chairman of the board, certainly the camps and department and the camps and staff are greatly in the debt of Ed Lemoine, and certainly the next appointment to the Board of Campsers will have some pretty big shoes to fill. But I just didn't want to note that tonight's appointment is to replace a board seat that was held by a very honorable person who certainly dedicated a lot of time and energy to the city over the course of the last eleven years, and beyond that as well in his other roles. And I'm personally greatly appreciative of everything he did. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anyone else to speak on docketed items? Good evening, name and address, the record.
Douglas Door, One Seventy-Eight Lippen Avenue. Just a question, is miscellaneous correspondence on a docket items, or is that later?
Uh, no, that would be later.
Okay.
Anyone on laws coming before us tonight? Okay. There being none, that portion of the meeting is now closed. Resolutions, there are no resolutions before us this evening. Report of committees, Finance Committee. Council Vice President Fivickio.
Thank you, Council President. First, we have nine dash seventeen dash oh two, ordinance and amendment of Title III, the Code of the City of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled Revenue and Finance, council's budget analyst, sponsored by Council President, passed in committee.
Motion approved. Second. Council Vice President, since this is my ordinance, would you like to take over the meeting so I can certainly explain?
Chair recognizes Council President Twain. Thank you. I submitted this change in the ordinance in the council's line for its auditor. Currently, the auditor is required to have a CPA. The biggest issue that we've run into over the last year with the prior order is that most auditors, most CPAs, are doing taxes in the month of April. March, they're preparing for taxes, and in May, they're starting their corporate taxes. For the council, our budget season is April, May, and June. It's difficult to find a full-fledged CPA to do the position, so after talking with some people in province, on the council, and different councils and what they do, most councils actually don't have an internal auditor anymore, they have more of a budget analyst, someone that can do forecasts, do financial analysis, look at headcount, figure out how much it costs for the head. So in looking at the vacancy we currently have in the auditor position, I talked with some members of the administration, I talked with some members of the council, and felt it would be easier to get someone that's more financially-analytically driven than a true full-fledged CPA. So I submitted this, and the Finance Committee talked about it, and I put it here now before the council. With that, I will take back the gavel from the Council Vice President.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Councilman Lanning?
By doing the summary, allowing the standards, there was second thoughts as far as an auditor for the city council. Financial analyst is not the same as a CPA. I don't remember us having a problem hiring CPAs as council auditors in the past. Is there a specific reason why we have a problem hiring a CPA at this point in time? Other than tax season?
Council Vice President, if you are into that form?
Sure, thank you, Council President. Well, I understand what you're saying, Councilman Lanning, but April, perhaps it's our problem because we schedule our budget sessions all in the month of April, which is the busiest month for every CPA in the state of Rhode Island and probably nationally, so it does cut into the time that they have available to do the job correctly. And the analyst, for example, if someone has a CFA, a chartered financial analyst degree or designation, that's certainly just as valuable as a CPA license, but I think it's just a difficulty with getting someone who can spend enough time, especially during March and April, which are obviously the most critical months for CPAs, so that would be, you know, and certainly I think that the education experience of the individual, they could be in corporate accounting and not really practicing CPA and still have twenty, thirty years' experience, so it's, I know it's a slight distinction, but I think it's just to open it up so we can get someone who can actually spend time.
Councilman Lanning?
All right. You're still not understanding, no matter how you explain it. And I've been in this council for sixteen years, I can never remember a situation where we couldn't get a CPA to do the work of this council. So this is a first. So this is the first time in sixteen years that we're going to lower our standards, and not use a CPA and get a financial analyst who doesn't have the degree that a CPA has. If this is the wish of this council, far be it for me to stop you, but I am not voting for this ordinance.
Director Strum, do you have a CPA?
No, I do not.
Wow, would you be a qualified, you have a master's, would you be a qualified budget analyst?
Oh, I think I would be a one-credit judge.
Under our current law, would you qualify to be the council auditor?
No.
Thank you. Councilman Poplaskas?
Thank you, Council President Fivickio. I understand what Councilman Lanning's saying, and I agree with some of it, but I think that the job has changed over the years. I think we need a different skill set, or at least have the ability to hire. And we can still hire a CPA, but I think that we need to do a better job forecasting and seeing the future and planning the economic development and the future of the city, so I'm okay with this ordinance. I don't think we're lowering our standards at all. Thank you.
Councilman Stichels?
Does a budget analyst have a degree or a certification? The only thing I see here is that they have, they would be required to have five years' experience in finance.
We're double-checking the ordinances it's written today. But the assumption would be that they have a degree, we can add that, that is an issue.
But you don't, that's not something you get, you don't get declared a budget analyst, that's kind of a generic title?
It is a generic title.
Okay. Well, I do think some kind of educational standard would be a good idea.
Yeah. Council President?
Yeah, to Councilman Stichels' point, perhaps an accounting degree or a similar degree, because many people have a Bachelor of Science in Accounting, maybe even have a Master's, but not a licensed CPA. But, you know, and some people have a CFA, which is probably more difficult to pass than even a CPA.
Yeah, to both councils, we removed the CPA language. There was no initial language in there that said bachelor's degree, because I think it was probably assumed that you had a CPA, you had the preceding degrees. It was probably an omission on our part that we probably should have specified that they needed a college degree. So we admitted that as we removed CPA, we didn't add four-year degree. But I would entertain a motion for someone to amend this, to add a four-year degree to fix that oversight.
I'll amend, I'll move to amend. I'll second that.
Is that motion amend the ordinance to add a four-year degree to line? Line thirty-one after experience in finance. Thank you for catching that, Councilman Stichels. Is that motion and a second, under discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilman Lanning?
No.
Councilwoman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichels?
Yes.
Councilman Boyd?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes. Any additional discussion? I'm going to turn the docket back over to you, Council Vice President, so I can say a couple of things about this law.
All right, Council President?
Yeah, I really don't view this as a reduction in skill set. I actually view it as an enhancement in skill set to what we currently have. A degree, a degree alone is not something, or a certification is not something that gives someone experience. What does that is years of practice. I would tell you that if we polled every director of finance in this state, I would feel comfortable betting my council salary that less than two have CPAs of the thirty-nine cities and towns. Most of them are all either former finance people, former treasurers, people who don't have CPAs. The people who know GAZB, which is government, account, and standby seat, came to the last word, people who know GAZB aren't CPAs. They're people who work in various budget and analytical departments. That's why we're making this change, so it'll be easier, easier for us to find someone who, when we ask them, "What is the forecast of this contract? How will it affect the next three, five, ten years?", they can build that kind of project and not be thinking about, "Well, is it a debit or is it a credit?" That's the difference. And with that, take it back, clerk, please take the role.
We already, did we do that?
Councilman Lanning?
No. Yes.
Councilwoman Stichels?
Yes.
Councilman Boyd?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes. Yes.
Next, we have resolution authorizing real estate tax abatements.
Thank you.
This was passed unanimously.
Is that motion approved?
Motion approved.
A second. I have motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichels?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Fivickio?
Yes.
Councilman Fivickio?
Yes.
Next, we have a resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements. This also passed unanimously.
Motion approve the motor vehicle tax abatements. I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichels?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Fivickio?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes. Yes.
Next, we have resolution authorizing tangible tax abatements.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Stichels?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes. Yes.
And that's all we have.
That concludes the Finance Committee, Public Works Committee, Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first order is nine seventeen dash oh one, ordinance and amendment of Title XIII of the Code of the City of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled Public Services, Race Water Discharge Limits, sponsored by Council Vice President Fivickio, and has been approved by committee.
Is that motion approved?
Motion approved. I have motion and a second, under discussion.
Council Vice President Fivickio.
Thank you, Council President. Just to bring the other members up to speed on this, there was only one really basic change. This was just to increase the limits on one certain chemical, and it's very, very minor adjustment, a very small adjustment. The administration explained it in detail at the committee. Mr. Mason was here for Public Works, and it's a very minor change. It's just so that a couple of our industries can meet the demands that the ordinance entails so that they're not over the limit, and it was really a very minor change, so it passed unanimously and it urged passage here.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Any additional discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichels?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Fivickio?
Yes. Yes.
We have a resolution naming the tennis courts at Cranston Stubbings Stadium, the Richard A. Dick Ernst Tennis Facility, sponsored by Council President Fivickio, co-sponsored by Councilman Poplaskas, Colford Hopkins, and Council Vice President Fivickio, as well as Councilman Arquette and McCauley, and this has been approved unanimously by committee.
Motion approve. Second. I have a motion and a second, under discussion. Seeing none, clerk, please take the role. I'll say something. I got to know Dick Ernst very well over the years. He actually knew me when I was a very little boy. We used to go to Vicfords on Roosevelt Ave, and he would sit there at the bar, drink his coffee, read his sports page, and talk about Cranston U Sports as a hockey and tennis coach. I know when Mayor Fung initially approached me with this idea, it was because he coached the mayor in tennis for very many years in college, and he knew him through high school. Coach Ernst was a valued member of Cranston, and I think a small piece to memorialize him would be to name the tennis courts after him. So that, clerk, please take the role.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichels?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Fivickio?
Yes.
Councilman Fivickio?
Rest in peace, Dick. Moving on to the ordinance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Business of the ordinance committee tonight, we have nine dash seventeen oh five, ordinance and amendment of Title X, Chapter three, two point zero four zero of the Code of City of Cranston, two thousand and five, entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Tucker Avenue, No Parking on Certain Streets, generally sponsored by Councilman Stichels.
Is that motion approved? Motion approved. I have a motion and a second, I believe in committee, Councilman, Council Majority of Poplaskas. This was contingent on the traffic report?
Correct.
Do we have the traffic report of the administration?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I tried contacting Steve Mulcahy last week, and apparently he has been out. I think initially he had sent an email indicating he didn't have any problems with it, but we didn't know if that constituted his actual report, and I haven't been able to verify that unless the administration has something further.
Good evening, Director Laporta.
Good evening, Council President. I have worked with Director Mason on this, and we will be complying with Councilman Stichels' request and moving the sign to where it needs to be. So it's just a matter of a formality of getting it from Steve Mulcahy. Could I ask, whether made the motion approved to amend it, and just say motion approved pending the traffic report, which I'm assuming will be forthcoming, and we will have done it legally?
That would be great, thank you.
I'll move to amend.
Second. I have a motion to approve pending the final traffic report. I have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please take the role.
Councilman Lanning?
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stichels?
Yes.
Councilman Poplaskas?
Yes.
Councilman Fivickio?
Yes.
Councilman Fivickio?
Yes. Yes. Now we have the Claims Committee. Thank you, Majority Leader Poplaskas.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I'd like to report out that the report of settled claims is attached here for informational purposes, and I will turn the floor back over to you.
Thank you very much, and with that, that will conclude the business of law of the evening. We will now move on to public hearings. So we'll start with the list of people that was submitted, that were all items that were not on the initial docket, so I will call Pauline DeRosa first. Good evening, Pauline, how are you?
Very well, thank you. Good evening, Council President Fivickio, and also council members. Typically, the Garden City Alliance focuses their energies addressing issues that concern the residents of Garden City and its close neighboring communities. However, this evening, I would like to briefly speak to the resolution sponsored by Councilman Arquette of Ward Three, whom I see is not in attendance this evening, asking the Pawtucket Red Sox to consider the city of Cranston as a possible location for their new stadium. We have listened to the radio interview that took place between Councilman Arquette and Dan York on Friday, October 20th. We were totally taken aback by the conversation that took place. One of the potential locations mentioned for this stadium was Western Cranston in the area off Hope Road. I don't believe the residents of Western Cranston would support this proposition in any way, shape, or form. In fact, most residents of the city of Cranston would object to having the stadium within the city limits. I quote from an article in the March 7th, two thousand and fifteen edition of the Providence Journal, quote, "For example, economists Dennis Coats and Brad Humphries reviewed more than forty academic studies that examined public subsidies for professional sports teams over the last two decades. Economists reach the nearly unanimous conclusion that tangible economic benefits generated by professional sports facilities are very small, clearly far smaller than sodium advocates suggest in smaller than the size of the subsidies," end of quote. Let's take a moment and give this resolution some very serious thought. The residents of Cranston do not want to be burdened with additional taxes on top of the already high taxes we are currently paying. And yes, you can take me out to the ballgame, just not within the boundaries of the city of Cranston. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ken, you're up at the plate.
No pun intended.
Pun intended.
Oh, yeah. Two things. One, I'd like to, that lady who retired, that was a wonderful show of respect for that lady, she deserved it, I'm sure, and not that I deserve that kind of respect, but I would just like a little bit of respect. As a taxpayer for thirty-one years, I'm back with the same complaint. The cemetery condition is a cemetery condition. My problem is I'm worried about my family's safety due to the trees, the leaning of the trees, and I don't want anybody to get hurt. If it becomes a legal issue, it's a legal issue, but I think I'm entitled to just a little bit of respect when I call City Hall and ask them to explain to me what's going on, and I get nothing. I believe it was you, sir, after my meeting last time, asked me to go in the hallway. I went out there, the conversation consisted of this, "Why does this have to be an issue? Why can't we just get this done and settle this so nobody gets hurt?" The response is, "Historical cemeteries are too complicated." That was it. That was my whole explanation to the matter. I'm trying not to get my son killed, the people I transform killed, my wife killed, or myself, or anybody else who works down the street killed. The mayor is a hypocrite. I'm sorry. I see this statement in the paper about what the panhandle is, "Oh, the resolution is there so nobody gets hurt, nobody gets hurt." That's my only problem. I'm only, not that I'm losing thousands of dollars in tax money just because of that, but when it comes to something like this, well, trimming a couple of trees when you've got to prune it, it's going to take an hour. For God's sakes, do it so nobody gets hurt. I've got nothing against the people in the Cemetery Commission or anybody else there. They're good people, they volunteer, they're hard-working people that are coming there. Do they know what they're doing? I don't know. Sometimes I don't know if a plumber knows how to cut down a tree or dig behind a tree without having it fall on somebody's head. Do they? I don't know, but I don't want to find out the hard way. But after I went to that meeting, his secretary told me, well, not his secretary, I'm sorry, his chief executive told me, "I'll get back to you in a couple of days." So I'm here to tell you, again, thirty days later, I never got a response. No decency, no, nothing at all. Mr. Colford came to my home. I asked him to come down and take a look. He met with my wife, he He met with my wife, he met with my neighbor. He had the decency at least to come down there and take a look and see. If he agrees with me, doesn't agree with me, at least he had the respect, the decency to show up. That's what you need here, some decency and some respect for the average taxpayer. I'm not here in a suit and tie, but I'm a man just like every other man here. I like to have a little respect, too. Thank you for your time.
Don't sit down. Don't sit down.
That's it. I'm done.
I know you're done, but I want the administration to respond. I mean, they were charged with calling you back after you came here last month. Our job as the council is to hear the issues from the constituents, connect you with the administration, and because I, you know, as much as I would love to go out there and just cut a tree down, I can't do that. So Director Lopez, I hope you have an update for this gentleman that can help him understand kind of what the process is.
Sure. Councilman, Council President, thank you for the opportunity to respond to Mr. Pirkowski?
Yes.
39, 49.
Yes.
Right. So I don't know who you spoke to in my office, but you didn't speak to me, and unfortunately, I know that you've emailed everyone, including the White House, according to some of your last emails. Unfortunately, the White House can't help you, but I can try to clarify your situation. First of all, we had our arborist, the city arborist, go out and look at those trees, and he determined that those trees are not in danger of falling or collapsing. He did observe that the branches are leaning outside of the cemetery onto the city's right of way, which I believe that where whoever lives over there is using as a driveway. So right now, the latest thing is we are looking to see if we can take care of the branches that are overhand, the, over the easel. The trees have been deemed not likely to fall by the August. And as far as the status of cemeteries are concerned, that's something that we are looking into because unfortunately, when these cemeteries were created, private people used to own them. And then these people die, they leave heirs. It's very complicated. And these cemeteries basically have no mothers and no fathers, and nobody wants to take responsibility or liability for them. So I apologize for my staff not getting back to you, but rest assured that we are looking into this, and we're trying to determine what the city can actually do in terms of what this, who owns a cemetery, or what we're going to do with the cemetery. So I hope that provides you with some clarification, and if you want to speak to me later or give me a call later this week, I can give you my direct line, and I'll be happy to address this with you. But this is a very complicated issue, and you're not the only person that's in this boat. We have cemeteries all over the city, including the major developments that are happening in the city, where we, as a city, have to look at each case individually and determine whether it's our responsibility, the state's responsibility, some heir of the person who started the cemetery. And the biggest case I can give you is the Oakland Cemetery over on Broad Street. That's a gigantic cemetery that right now, we don't know what's going to happen with it because the person and the family who owns that cemetery, there's no heirs. The person that's the caretaker there doesn't have the resources to take care of the cemetery. And it's something that I don't know if the city's ready to take on that responsibility. So I understand your frustration, but just bear with us as we unravel this. This is like an onion. Once you think you've got one layer peeled, you come up to another layer, and quite frankly, it stinks.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
The arborist who came down there to certify it, can I get a copy of his thing saying that he certified the thing? Is it not likely to fall?
I will talk to the arborist, and I'll also check with our legal department to see if we can do that.
Okay.
Okay? Because I know that there was another person who went and marked those trees with blue spray paint.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know who that was. I think it was a member of the Cemetery Commission, but they really should not have done that because they're acting the color of the city because they're members of the commission. But they're not authorized or qualified to make a determination whether those trees need to come down or not. Only the city arborist can do that.
All right. How about the digging? If you're digging, who owns the property? You don't know who owns the property.
That's what we're digging into, literally.
If you don't know who owns the property, don't you need permission to dig?
Dig? Do you mean physically dig?
Yeah, physically dig with a shovel and at the grave sites or behind the trees. How can you go on?
I don't know who's digging. I don't know who you're talking about, the story, the story.
The graves dug behind the trees.
Who did?
I don't know. You tell me.
Why would I know this? I didn't send the city, and the city hasn't done that.
Except for Mr. Colford will tell you. He was there.
Well, I can tell you that we're looking into it.
Let me ask you a question. If somebody goes and they dig, and they dug up these graves, which we have pictures of and we've seen.
Yeah.
And they spray paint the trees, and you're on private property, you don't know whose it is, doesn't that become vandalism?
I don't know who did that.
Well, I don't know. Well, isn't it, well, is it vandalism?
It could very well be, but I'm not here to argue that.
Gentlemen, this is an issue that is not going to be solved tonight by the two of you discussing it back and forth. I would recommend, if you have some time, to give Carlos a call in the next couple of days, to try to schedule some time to actually talk it through.
I understand, sir. I understand what you're saying.
I know.
But nobody's kept their word to me so far, and I don't understand how they can keep their, going to keep their word to me now. That's why I'm trying to get my questions here now while I'm standing here in a public forum. So you've got to understand my situation. I've been told by City Hall numerous times, they're going to get back to me, and I got emails from the mayor's office themselves. Your arborist is going to come this weekend, they're going to come see you, they're going to talk to you, call and make an appointment. I've called them, they haven't returned my calls. So it's easy to say, okay, go away now, and then come back, and they're going to talk to you, but they haven't kept their word to this point. Why would I believe them now? So I'll ask again. If you're on private property, you don't know who's private property, and you dig holes and stuff like that, and you spray paint the trees, it's vandalism.
I don't know what you're talking about, so I can't really answer that.
That's all right. I understand what you're saying. I'm going to get an attorney to protect my legal rights because frankly, I just can't ask anybody in the law. I can't. I just can't because nobody keeps their word as far as I'm concerned.
And since you said that you're going to have an attorney, you should have your attorney contact the city solicitor, and if that's the case, then I can really deal with the subject from our office.
Maybe I don't do anything anyway. Thank you.
Thank you. Annette Born?
How are you?
I'm good.
So, Annette Born, live at 51 Community Drive. I'm here addressing docket items 101703 and 101704, looking for reference to the Ordinance Committee to deal with an ordinance to change the comp plan. So we have C2 to a C3 at the intersection of Warwick and Parkout, and Rule 4 does, oh, takes the parcels parcel by parcel. Anyway, so I've watched economic and community development activity play out across municipalities throughout the state in my work for the last 12 years here. I've been looking at that corner since I moved here in 2004, wishing for some creative developer to fall out of the sky, you know, to come up with a public-private partnership, develop mixed-use space that provides economic development, perhaps some housing, perhaps some community space. So I recognize that in middle-income areas, most of America now, the economic model does not really support what we used to call mom-and-pop businesses. We, you can get something like that in downtown Barrington, East Greenwich, even in Pawtucket Village where we have those smaller stores, but the turnover is actually quite high. It's very hard to support those kinds of small businesses. So I'm not living in a fairy tale. However, I do have questions both about the zoning and planning aspects, and then with regard to Cumberland Farms, if that is really the done deal. Relative to the zoning and planning, C2 is called neighborhood business. C3 is general business. So I saw the setback differences are set to zero, and I'm wondering if this has been an overall decision across the city? Are you looking at all of the C2 designations, and one in the C3 works elsewhere, or if this is just this one spot for this one time for this one business? C3, from what I understand, would allow for a much broader variety of kinds of entities, and so I concern myself with Cumberland Farms. If that fell through for any reason, what else are we actually opening ourselves up to on that rather large parcel, which is also kind of a gateway for that section of Edgewood? The overall assessment of both uses and the draft comprehensive plan, the current comprehensive plan is expired. I think I understood from my last discussion with Director LaPaula, you know, and obviously Lynn is retiring, so planning is going to be in a flux right now. Maybe Jason's staying on, hopefully. But I'm wondering what the process is for the comp plan right now? Are we having public hearings? Is there an advisory group? It would be really great to get some neighborhood impact, neighborhood input on what is going on, especially in that very densely developed part of the city. What is the scale of business to residential area when we go from a C2 to a C3? This puts our small businesses in danger. There are locally-owned gas stations on Warwick and on Park Ave. There is a convenience store directly across the street. If any of you have been watching the conversation on Nextdoor, Edgewood Village, which I advise all of you to do, the idea would be that, you know, you could be putting three other businesses out of business. And I realize this is a capitalist economy, you know, competition is competition, but, you know, instead of having one eyesore, then we maybe have three. There are, I don't know, 100-plus or minus school kids that come across that intersection to get to Parthen Middle School. With it being a gas station, cars will be going in and out a lot more. I can imagine kids going there, getting their drinks, getting whatever, and really just putting them in danger to be crossing through a gas station all the time. I'm wondering if the Planning Commission has had a say in this? And, you know, things that I'd love to have happen is, can we have a planning shiret, you know, for our community, you know, in that area? And is there a public-private partnership possible? Creative placemaking, community space. Questions directly related to the Cumberland Farms. Are there architectural renderings? How much is parking lot? How much is store? What else is sold in the store? Is this just convenience, or is there?
So I just, I'm not just interrupt you, but this is being introduced tonight as new business. So the process flow for this item is it would go to planning for hearing next month. The planning board would receive all that information that you're talking about, renderings, the plan that the applicant is going to present. If they approve it, then in December, we would then hold public hearings in the council at the ordinance committee. So we haven't seen anything yet. All we've received is a request to change the zone on the parcel. So all we really know is someone's requesting to change the parcel on the zone parcel. As this process continues, we will get more information as it becomes available, but they have not submitted that information as yet. This is being introduced as new business, and your questions are very valid, but I would recommend that we take them, and we can take them to the planning board either via email or in-person discussion at the planning board hearing, because we really can't answer them tonight because we haven't seen anything yet.
Okay. So in the docket, it says it's being referred to the Ordinance Committee.
Yes, the process of the council is, it comes before us, we refer to the Ordinance Committee, we advertise it for, I believe, Madam Clerk, it's how many months? How many weeks?
It's going to be referred to the December 7th Ordinance Committee. That's a short month for us. It also, they will be heard before the Planning Commission on December 6th, which is the first Tuesday in the month. Both ordinances will be advertised multiple times as required by state law. Notice will go out to a borders within the appropriate radius, and that is when the public, advising them of the public hearing.
Okay. Because I saw the December 7th date in the docket, today's docket, but I didn't see the December 6th date.
December because it's, that's the Planning Commission referral. They will be running their own ads in the Providence Journal regarding that. These are council dates. We do not list other committee dates.
I understand. Okay. Thank you. So just, can I?
Yeah, you can finish. I just wanted to let you know there's a process.
Think about it.
Yep, you got it.
Before the Commission even gets it. So architectural renderings, parking lot, how much store, what's in the store, how do they take care of garbage, what will their hours be? How bright will it be for how long? I'm thinking big with lights, the corner traffic. I would like an impact study. I'm thinking they would want curb cuts along Warwick Ave side. And so I'm thinking about traffic coming north on Warwick, east on Park, creating gridlock in the middle of Park and Warwick Ave. Environmental impact because there are more gas tanks now. The curb cuts will likely be used for illegal right turns because that right now is a no right on red. And just the track record of Cumberland Farms working with communities and actually coming in and talking to us about working collaboratively with them. So I thank the council for their time.
Thank you, Annette. But again, I would recommend Planning Commission because they're the experts on this stuff. Suzanne Arena.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Just for the record, I stated the wrong date. The first Tuesday in December is December 5th, not the 6th. The Ordinance Committee is the 7th.
So planning December 5th?
Yes.
Ordinance, if it passes planning, on the 7th?
No, it'll be on the 7th regardless. Planning will only give a recommendation, and then the council will still address it at the Ordinance Committee on the 7th, whether or not planning says yes or no.
Good evening.
Good evening. Suzanne Arena, 88 Lakeland Road, Cranston, Rhode Island. I'm here to talk about the resolution that you put forward, which, is this the right time?
Well, I didn't put a resolution forward. So a resolution was submitted by Councilman Arquette.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay. Just, let's not.
About the gun safety in schools. And I have to tell you, you know, as a parent, seeing that Rhode Island is only one of eight states that allow concealed guns in K through 12, frightening. I do shoot, and I enjoy shooting, but I don't feel that anybody should have a concealed gun in a school. I am aware that the school committee has passed this twice for the well-being of the children that they feel in the schools. It is imperative to have such protection, kind of at a loss why we wouldn't pass that. I'll be interested to hear what your argument is as to why Second Amendment should be carried in a school for safety for children, when I don't believe that anybody but law enforcement should have that. So that was one, and then there was a second resolution, but I don't know if I can speak to that now, or?
You can speak, you can say whatever you like, but just, I did not submit the pros acts resolution.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Yes. I don't know whose idea that was.
He's not here tonight. It's Councilman Arquette.
Okay. So I think Cranston's doing great economically. I think we've done really well as a city and the growth. However, I do not support moving them out of Pawtucket. I believe that the structure that they have, the infrastructure for the people socioeconomic there, they need to have it. I don't want it in Cranston. We haven't done any kind of studies, or maybe, you know, Councilman Arquette will know something that I don't, but I would suspect that we'd have to do some kind of long-term traffic study and some other things. So I'm not in support of that, and I really don't want to see that as a taxpayer. No, none of my tax monies shall be supported to that. Thank you.
As a reference to the group, anyone who was against the pros acts proposal, I welcome you to the Ordinance Committee on December, no, November. Clerk left. You can say a lot, I can. 16th, thank you, November 16th. Uh, so that will be heard at that meeting where we will have a open discussion on validity of the resolution. That concludes my list. Anyone else? I know, Mr. Doe, you wanted to come up and talk about something, so, since you came up last time. Hello?
Good evening. Um, we received the correspondence between the Division of State Law Planning and the Planning Director regarding the solar power complaint. The state rejected the amendment. Now, the Planning Director's letter to Division of State Law Planning notes the department is somewhat confused by the state's comments. He states the department would have to conclude that the state would have approved the amendment if not for the technical rejection. Actually, a close reading of the letter makes the state's rejection clear. I mentioned three brief comments, as brief as I can. First, they wrote, "Proper setting of such facilities is critically important in terms of the protection of wildlife habitats, natural resources, including forest lands and agricultural lands, and public welfare. In this respect, we are pleased that the amendment includes a statement that quote, 'The zoning areas should be modified to identify the types of renewable energy production facilities, like that are to be allowed in the city, the zoning districts to which such facilities can be located, and the states know where such facilities are to be developed.' Obviously, the state is recommending that the city's zoning orders be amended to protect such habitats and lands. The clear implication is the city's comments on the ordinances does not." Second, our comment number one, "Consider permitting development of solar facilities, quote, without limitation." They recommend a deletion or clarification of that phrase. They go on to write, "The setting of any form of development, including renewable and alternative energy production facilities, needs to be context-sensitive in an appropriately regulated way to protect both the public and environment. Obviously, the city cannot allow development without limitation and protect sensitive habitats, forests, farms, and open spaces. The latter demands limitations. We presented with an opportunity to protect public conservation land using existing ordinance, the planning department refused to do so." The state's file comment, which you've heard before, and you've also heard lettered to before as well, gets the core ordinance. Comment two, "Deliberate clarifies statements that could be interpreted to mean that the city does not consider renewable, alternative, alternative energy production facilities to be a form of development." The amendment language includes statements that appear to say that such facilities should not be considered development. For example, in the provided amendment to the land use policy 1.3, which states, "Reserve of existing farm land and developer land as current undeveloped, but temporarily renewable development potential for landbaking may allow the land to be used for passive alternative energy generation, such as solar power." The state specifically rejects this statement, which is the foundation of the city's ordinance. Following the state's advice, in six amendments to the section of the Comp Plan are deleted or modified. The end result is the state has cut the heart out of the ordinance here, leaving nothing more than a generic statement to, quote, "Encourage the development of renewable energy facilities." The law, the director, does not address one single comment that the state made. Anyone who doubts the state's argument, we don't visit the southern road on the rip and out projects covering the development to witness the level of destruction taking place. I reassure them that Division of State Law Planning shares my concerns with the city's solar power policy, and I hope that the new planning director receives the state's comments in a positive manner and accepts the state's offer of assistance in developing an ordinance that actually does protect Western Cranston's farms, forests, and open spaces. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doe. Mr. Doe? Name and address to the record.
Bretton Bingo, 27 Perennial Drive.
Good evening, Bretton.
Good evening, President Freina and city council members. I'd like to start off tonight by extending our sincere thank you to the city council members and Robbie Moxian for your continued support of addressing the traffic issues on Salkinossack Crossroads as expeditiously as possible. Your support is very much appreciated by the residents of Garden City and surrounding neighborhoods. Our concerns, however, go beyond the traffic issues. We have a gem within the greater Garden City Chapelview area with an excellent mix of upscale shopping, fabulous restaurants, and established residential neighborhoods. Growth at both shopping centers must be done in an organized, well-thought-out manner to maintain the quality of life in the surrounding neighborhoods. Residents of the Garden City neighborhood have met with the management at both shopping centers and have repeatedly been assured that all future development will continue to be of the same quality that currently exists. Kelly Coats of the Carpignaro Group went so far as to personally tell us that there would be no big-box stores in the Chapelview complex. We're very dismayed to learn that not only is Carpignaro not upholding their commitment to maintain an upscale environment within the new phases of development, they're seeking to change the zoning in Lot 1 from mixed-use planned development and parts of Lots 2 and 22 from open space to C5 heavy industry. Furthermore, we're hearing that the Carpignaro Group wants to build a Costco warehouse store in this area, which is not upscale at all. This change of plans is simply unacceptable and begs the question, what other development plans are in the works that haven't yet been revealed? Big-box stores and other type of heavy industry do not belong in a residential area like Garden City and the surrounding neighborhoods. Not only will the construction of a big-box store dramatically affect traffic in this already congested area, it will also diminish the look and feel of the entire area. This will in turn negatively impact the quality of life for residents and may result in a decrease in property value. Historically, big-box development is away from residential areas. It's becoming very clear that there is no master plan for the development from the management of either shopping center. Plans keep changing and changing quickly without regard to the impact to the area and to the residents. We ask that you hit the pause button on this development and that a comprehensive review is undertaken of all proposed development in the Garden City and Chapelview area. We're suggesting that a master plan is created for controlled growth of the entire area, identifying what needs to happen before any new construction begins, including roadway improvements, identifying specific types of development that are appropriate to maintain the quality of the area, and consideration given to the impact of this development on the residents of the surrounding neighborhoods. We are all for progress in development, but not at the expense of the quality of life in our great neighborhoods. Thank you.
Name and address to the record.
Kristen Cuddy. My address is 114 Fort Avenue. Um, the issue that I'm about to describe to city council tonight is one of first impression for the state of Rhode Island and the city, and involves having the ownership of Savannah cats as pets. There are two of these cats that live down in Tuxit Neck, one of which has broken into my family's home four times, the most recent time being this past Saturday, October 14th. Cat severely injured our domestic cat, um, so bad that we had to have surgery last week. I just get upset because we do have a six-week-old infant at home. The cat fight took place right outside of my daughter's bedroom and it was caught on baby mon, on her baby monitor, so we do have the video. The cat, its owners have been alerted of this issue. As I said, it's broken into our home four times, beginning in July. The owners were unable to control the animal. Um, so at this point, we've also alerted the Cranston Animal Control and the Cranston Police Department, and this particular cat is in their possession and quarantine right now. The issue is that the rabies vaccination isn't shown to actually work on wild animals. So, the state has said that the ownership of these type of animals as pets is illegal in the state of Rhode Island, but I'm here today to alert you guys about the issue, um, the fact that these cats are living in the city and also that I hope that you can support Cranston Animal Control and Cranston Police Department in properly dealing with these two particular cats going forward and also for the ordinance committee to look at the city ordinances that deal with the nuisance and vicious animal, um, in general. They're geared towards wild, to dogs versus cats, so it's difficult. They're more reactive and something terrible like this has to happen and almost be caught on video in order for, um, you know, residents to, to, to deal with the issue. Um, and we would just, you know, thank you for your time in looking at this. Um, we also want to thank the Animal Control and the Police Department for their efforts on our behalf. It's our understanding from DEM that they're going to have to, um, pursue the animal and deal with whether it's going to be euthanized or sent to wildlife under the city ordinances instead of the state law because of the way that Cranston has this set up. But I just wanted to alert everyone of the issue and let you know what's going on, so thank you.
Thank you very much for coming this evening. I was just briefed by the administration. They are working with it and the state is trying to decide what the next step is. I apologize that, uh, this cat did this. It's a terrible circumstance. Good luck. Councilman Psychos?
I just have a question. What, what did you call this cat?
It's a Savannah cat. It's a...
Like Georgia?
Uh, it's similar to theirs. The breed is a wild African cat. It's bred as a domestic cat. Um, so it's, they're, you know, very expensive, exotic animals that you purchase down south and they, you know, ship them up here illegally. So, it's, there's different generations of the cats, um, like various, many different breeds, but, uh, we don't exactly know where this cat came from or what generation it is, um, but we have, you know, there have been other residents that have been complaining. It's been killing ducks and swans and tucks at Pooh. It's gone after other, um, outdoor cats, et cetera. So, as far as I know, it's only broken into our home, but it came in through the AC vent. So, I'm, so I don't know, you know, it's, I'm nursing right now because I have the infant and the vet wasn't sure if it smells the milk and looking for kittens or what's happening, but it's a dangerous animal and, you know, we hope that, I love animals. I don't want it to be euthanized, but if it could go to a wildlife refugee here, just outside of Cranston and the state of Rhode Island, so...
Councilman, pleasure to be back here.
Um, thank you, Council President. Councilman Psychos, just to bring you up to speed on something too, and I haven't had a chance to call you, but it just, by coincidence, I happened to be speaking to Mrs. Cuddy's mom when this went down, when the Cranston police showed up at the house. She had approached me, um, and happened, and I actually got to see the video. I was literally watching the video and then I think Ms. Cuddy called her mom and I knew that the police had picked up the, the animal. So, I did some research myself and, and actually pulled, um, the DEM regs, um, and I, I think that we may want to look at changing our ordinances, but, um, the, the Public Environment Enforcement has control, has authority over wild animals, native wildlife. There's an enabling statute that gives them the authority and any, these are called hybrid animals, okay? Um, and any generation removed from the exotic ancestor is probably, uh, not sus, uh, cannot accept a rabies vaccine. The other problem is, to me, they look like a cheetah. I mean, they're a very, um, aggressive, smart animal and I really don't think they belong in any neighborhood. Three states have banned them completely. Many of the states, environmental laws prohibit them, but I think we should probably look at doing it also, and I can give you, you know, plenty of information on it, but, um, it's, it's a scary situation because unless they're fifth or sixth generation, they retain most of the characteristics of the, the African serval, I think is the name of it, but it looks to me like a cross between a leopard and a cheetah, um, and it can leap eight feet in the air. I mean, these, this is not something that belongs, uh, in, in someone's home, so, um, and when I saw the, the video clip, I, it just struck me, it was amazing. And I, and I understand, especially with an infant in the house, having grandchildren of my own now, I, uh, it would scare the heck out of me. So, I know that, and I think DEM took possession from the city because it's within their jurisdiction. It's not something that you, you would even want our animal control unit to have possession of because it could be, uh, because of the fact that rabies vaccines don't work, um, they're sold over the internet. I, I was shocked when I read some of the, went on to some of the websites where you can buy these things. Um, I think, I believe it may even be illegal to bring them into the United States, um, but somehow they've made their way into the U.S. So, I think we, we should do something about it, um, and, you know, I'll be happy to, you know, follow up with Mrs. Cuddy and Councilman, you're welcome to, uh, if, if I, you know, if we think we should do something with the ordinance, I'd be happy to co-sponsor it, but...
Council Vice President? Why don't we just draft an ordinance that makes them illegal?
Yeah, oh, I, I, yeah, I just...
Because it sounds like that's what you think we should do.
That's what I think we should do, yeah.
Let's do it.
All right.
Thank you. Hoping anything? Anybody else want to get up and say? Good evening, sir. Name and address to the record, please.
My name is Ramsey Davis. I live at 58 Fortson Avenue. My wife and I have resided there over 30 years. I am just here to thank you for reconsidering the No Guns in School legisla, uh, resolution for consideration at your ordinance committee, and I'm hoping that I will have an opportunity to speak at that tonight. So, thank you. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Matt Gendron, 139 Smith Street. I'm the chair of the, uh, the Cranston Zoning Board of Review. Wanted to thank the council for bringing up Ms. Montanaro's renewal or extension of her term on the board, but I'd also like to point out to the board that we've had some issues with Quorum lately. We have a number of members that have not been reappointed or were missing members. If we could have a concerted effort from the council to get us a full board, that would be helpful, um, because we, we do regularly have conflicts with people on the board that are unable to vote on certain matters with certain developers. Uh, there was, uh, another thing that we regularly see has to do with LED sign issues. Uh, I understand that there was an ordinance that, there was a group that had drafted of council members and that, that has not been enacted yet. I just thought that I'd come before you and ask you to push forward with that. Uh, and then Cumberland Farms is near and dear to my heart. Big fan of Cumberland Farms. The intersection that the ordinance committee will be considering is a terrible intersection already. Got a very bad traffic rate the last time this is before the council and the last time before, this was before the council at that Warwick and Park Ave. It was, I believe, a D most times of the day and then the change that Cumberland Farms wanted to do at the time would have made it an F. So, it's a very bad traffic intersection to begin with and what they're doing would add more traffic to the area. Thank you very much.
Good evening, President Freina and council members. My name is Robert Santori, S.A.N.T.U. Tuozzo, and I, and I live on 30 Egan Road here in Cranston. Uh, I just want to speak on two things this evening real quick. Uh, not PlaSocz though, but I'll save that, no, that. Uh, one is, I know two months ago, this council passed a resolution urging the administration to do a traffic study at Salkinossack Crossroad, and I was wondering where that stood currently because it's going to lead into my second bit.
Still doing it?
I believe it's in process. I, I, I'm sure it takes a while for traffic studies. I just was wondering if it's, you know, could be happening soon, could be happening, because I know winter's coming, you know, it's going to be happening next year.
Um, there's a lot of things happening at that site, as you could probably be aware of, so...
Uh, and the second thing, because I understand it's a lot in flux, and I say that because of the earlier comment by the woman who had access about, you know, them changing their plans for both entities and whether or not, um, what kind of impact that's going to have in the traffic study, especially if, you know, more and more things are going to keep getting under construction over there because you don't obviously want to stop construction, do a traffic study and find out you really shouldn't have it over there and then waste everybody's time. Uh, the second thing, this is probably more pertinent, is, um, uh, right after you go past Garden City and Chapelview, uh, on New London and you go off the highway, when, when you're getting off the highway on either side, another redoing the bridge right now, and they changed the yield signs, stop signs. And I take that way every day from work to and fro, to and fro work, and I don't, I haven't, after the second day, I stopped taking that exit, those exits, because they're extremely dangerous right now. Um, I don't know if there's any signs put up at the, um, as you go off the exits about there's a stop sign instead of a yield sign down below and whether it's the city or the state that could maybe do something about warning pedestrian, warning, uh, motor vehicles about that happening, because I've seen at least, I believe, four or five fender benders at the bottom of these exits in the last week alone. And I, my, I know myself, last week, the first day they changed to a stop sign, someone almost went into my car, just dug this close because I actually stopped and not everyone is realizing that. Personally, I think that in the long run, stop signs probably better over there because people don't really know how to yield. Uh, but that being said, um, I think that before someone gets really hurt, we should, uh, if there could be more signs over there or something to alleviate that, that'd be great. That's just something I've noticed.
Um, Ellen, I, I can tell you'd have to follow up with the state DOT as that is a state board.
Ah, all right. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Ojek.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tom Ojek. I live at 11 Hall Place in Cranston, and, uh, I'm just pleased to hear that the, um, No Guns in School resolution will again have an opportunity for, um, discussion at the ordinance committee. And I would just like to encourage the, uh, members of the council that are on the committee not to let the Second Amendment subvert the First Amendment. That committee hasn't allowed the appropriate open discussion that is required. We're talking about something that deals with life and in particular, this particular resolution is just something that supports the safety of our children. I would also, a couple of times, people have mentioned that they've done research on cats and they wanted to look at historical things. I would advise before the meeting that you historically look... I would advise before the meeting that you historically look at, into the history on what the Second Amendment is really about and not to be intimidated by people who belong to the Second Amendment coalition. The Second Amendment doesn't give you unfettered right to carry a gun wherever you want. It can be restricted. And we're talking about the safety of our children, nothing more important. So I hope you'll look at the history of the Second Amendment because it isn't just something as it is stated. The reasons behind the Second Amendment would surprise a lot of people. So I ask you to take the time, this is a very critical and important issue. As was pointed out, we're only one of eight states that still allows this. And I think that we should be able to learn from other people in other states about this. So I'm happy to see that at least it's moving forward. The other item is that, I was on a meeting a number of months ago and the issue of diversity within city government was brought up. And I'm still feeling that that's an issue that has not got a fair hearing. I haven't heard anything about that. And quite frankly, in my opinion, it's more than just points because of being able to speak a certain language. I think that it requires probably a great deal more consideration as to how we can make our city government much more diverse. So again, I thank the council. And just one last thing, unfortunately, I couldn't make the ordinance committee meeting, but I heard there was a comment that this resolution is something political. It's not political at all. This comes from the heart. If panhandling is a safety issue, then darn it, guns in school is a safety issue also. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak? Seeing none, we'll close that section of the hearing. Move on to election of city officials. Election of city officials, I have a zoning board review reappointment of Joy Montano. She finished the expiring term of Steve Correll who resigned a few months ago. So Joy was reluctant to come back, but having her years' experience prior on the zoning board, she filled that open seat after a few months back because of the condition of the fact that we can't get people to show up to meetings. I asked Joy if she would please take the appointment again to what she said, yes. I do know, just before we go on Joy, we did add Mr. Barberi to his own board review last month, so he should be coming. So we have, I believe, two members that hopefully, in theory, you'll have a quorum. But please let me know if they don't show up because then I'll throw them off and put two to be born. Ms. Montano, we need a motion to approve a reappointment and a second.
Motion to approve?
Second, and a motion to approve and a second. Under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 To access the board review, I have a reappointment for Stephanie Sosha as an alternate for term ending 1/28/2020. Do I motion?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion and a second.
A motion and a second, under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll. Yes.
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 Under the appointment to the board of canvassers for the Democrats, I would say a motion to appoint Fred Jocelyn as he is the number one name on the list unless any member of the Democratic Party has an issue with that as the majority leader is not here. Councilman May, before I recommend that appointment, I'd like to say a few words about Ed Lemoine. Ed Lemoine, I've known him since I was over at Allen College, he was on the wrestling team. He graduated from Allen College, he became a teacher. Later on in life, he became chairman of the Democratic Party and served well and honorably. At some point in time, became principal of Creighton West. He'd been a board member of the Board of Canvassers for 11 years. Ed spent his life in public service in teaching our children. He was an honorable man and a good friend of mine, and I think we're all going to miss him dearly. So thank you. Thank you for those kind words. And I'd like to reappoint, to appoint Fred Jocelyn to the Board of Canvassers.
Second.
I have a motion to appoint Fred Jocelyn to the expired term of Ed Lemoine. And a second, under discussion, seeing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Apologize, technology's a little slow.
That's okay.
Move on to report of city officers. Historical Cemetery Commission Annual Report. Mr. Parkhurst, name and address to the record and then your reporting.
Colin Parkhurst, 52 Oaks Street. I am the Chair of the Cranston Historical Cemetery Commission, have been since January, sorry, July of last year. First of all, thank you, Council President, members of the City Council, members of the public for welcoming me tonight. I would like to first off say, give my extreme thanks to Lynn Ferney for her service. She was instrumental in helping us get off the ground after a number of years of, say, hiatus of the council and in helping me get things up and running again, so. I will not bore you by reading out the entire report, but I would just like to go over, basically paraphrase portions of it so that we understand our main goals as well as to hit a few points that are very important to us in the next few years. So our primary purpose since we restarted last year was basically to assess the 87 cataloged cemeteries in the city. Wait them for maintenance, we want to eventually get them all down to a low maintenance state, find volunteers to maintain them over time, and then catalog each one of them for inclusion in the state digital database, which is unique to any of the other states, which is a privilege of being in such a small state. So that way, this information will never be lost again. Of the 87 cemeteries, 51 of them are privately owned. We do support, there is a statewide initiative across many of the cities and towns in the state to provide a tax break for the property, the actual area of the cemeteries of property owners who actually maintain those cemeteries. And our commission does strongly support any such measure which would be presented to this council. We are working strongly to attract volunteers through various means. We are pursuing, we are using social media and networking, print and electronic means in order to obtain volunteers and build our database. And they, it is showing some success, which we are working to keep, continuing growing. The major reforms that we would like to see moving forward the next few years is we are, we actually, at this point, do not have official bylaws. We have written up a draft for them in order to include more membership. Currently, we have seven active members of the commission, three of which are determined by the ordinance and one of which only regularly shows. So included in these bylaws would be a revision to increase membership to nine members and to adjust the membership to include, for example, public works rather than parks and rec and opening up membership for greater efficiency. We're also looking at the possibility of streamlining the appointment process, which has become an issue in the past regarding trying to get appointment letters to proper personnel for approval. We would like to move in the direction of the City of Warwick, which I am familiar with, which is also run and chaired by Peggy Malcolm, who is also the Chair of the State Commission, appointed by the governor, which basically is appointment by mayor, ratification by the City Council for all members. And the final major issue that we're looking to move forward with is we would like to work towards obtaining 501(c)(3) status for being able to obtain nonprofit funding, which would be a great thing to our abilities to get jobs done. This would include issues such as what Mr. Pykarski had brought up earlier, maintenance of cemeteries which are abandoned, which is actually nearly half of the cemeteries in the city. This would also include something like regular maintenance of cemeteries that are not adopted by people, being able to pay landscapers to maintain those on a somewhat regular basis. And then the large one is if we could actually get enough funding long-term, maybe actually doing something about Roger Williams Mausoleum, which I know has been a nice work for both the city and the state. And we would like to try and see if we can find a way to reinter those individuals that are abandoned there. So currently, that process is working its way. We are hoping to get solicitor approval to move forward with that and we will be pushing for that in the near future. We will also be amending our bylaws, our draft of our bylaws to meet the requirements of 501(c)(3) status. So as you can see in the report, we have made a great deal of process, of progress. Over a dozen cemeteries in less than a year and a half have seen significant change. We have, we've been working closely with Boy Scouts, random volunteers throughout the city, private property owners. And then I'd like to just mention in regards to Mr. Pykarski, as I said, almost half of our cemeteries are abandoned. It is our job to take care of all the cemeteries in the city. Unfortunately, half of them are privately owned, so we always have to work with the property owners to get that permission. Usually we get that and there are no issues. There's a lot of work ahead of us, but for the cemeteries that are not privately owned and are considered abandoned, there's no way there to take care of them. And so it may not be our property, but as far as the Cemetery Commission stands, and this is all the way up through the State Commission, we are the foster parents of those cemeteries and it's our responsibility to take care of them. I do understand there are issues with liability and we don't ever want to step on toes, we don't want to tell the city what they need to do, that's definitely not our place. But if we would be able to have the funding long-term, we're not expecting it from the city, that's way too much money to be asking for. But instead through nonprofit status, we'd be able to hopefully resolve that long-term. And so we will continue to do this kind of work on those unless we get an order from the law department to stop because it is imperative that we take care of those who have come before us. And as Mr. Pykarski said, we were digging in the graves, that's, I just want to let you know. That is one of the cemeteries that is on our list of being maintained. There are not really holes being dug. Stones are being uncovered, bases are being uncovered, so that stones can be repaired properly and we are going in by book, so that way they will last for many years to come. And if you have any questions, I'd be more than welcome.
Councilman McCallie.
Thank you. Thank you, sir, for your report. 51 of the 87 cemeteries on private property, are those known owners that were, because he brought up that we can't find owners, is that 51 identified owners?
Yes, that is, that's through the tax assessor's map. So the local deeds that are, you know, public information, we have the owner information. The commission is working on sending out a mailer to all of these 51 people to get their permission for access. It would be basically access with prior notice to do any work on these cemeteries. We would expect a few would come back not allowing us. We already, we've been dealing with ARC right, done in hope, they don't want us on their property, understandable. So we're working with them to try and come up a plan for maintenance in the future, which would not, you know, go against prior property rights.
The 87 cemeteries total, that doesn't include the number of abandoned cemeteries?
That does include, so these 87 cemeteries, these are considered found, located and registered with the state.
And they're maintained, sir?
No, they are not all maintained necessarily. Maybe a quarter of them to a half of them might be maintained, but these are the ones that you actually see the signs at. We are based off of records taken back originally in the 1890s and then as recently as the late 80s, early 90s of just trying to locate many of these cemeteries. There are a few hundred cemeteries that are listed within city. However, a majority of those were located to larger cemeteries such as St. Anne's, others completely destroyed, and we have just an idea based off of very old descriptions of where they might actually be. And so, yes, these 87 cemeteries are actually catalogued, located, we know where they're at, and we're going to be working to take care of them. They are on the list for prior preservation or maintenance.
Thank you for your dedication, I appreciate it.
Councilman Jory Popovskis.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. First off, Mr. Parkhurst, thank you very much for all your hard work and your body's work. I know it's a daunting task to stand on top of, to say the least. I know you reached out to me about changing your bylaws or pushing that through the ordinance committee, so I actually had a question to the Chair, to our solicitor or the city solicitor, would the bylaws of the commission fall under our laws, changing it to 501(c)(3) or updating the bylaws, is that something that would go to ordinance committee?
I think because the city commission, then it would have to go before the council for ratification. In terms of a 501(c)(3), I'm a little uncertain, I'd have to talk to Director Strom about that. If they intend to raise money, we would have to keep it, we'd have to have some kind of an accounting system which would include the city to give, I'm sure the intent is to raise money for a charitable deduction, so the city would have to keep track of those monies in order to give the donor the attractive tax exemption for that, so. It would have to be something worked out, I think.
Yes, I believe according to the 501(c)(3) requirements, our commission or the board would have to have a named treasurer. I don't know if it would be one of the commissioners because I do, my understanding is that any monies raised by the commission can be kept separate from that of the city.
I guess, the way they talk, what I'm trying to get at here is.
I get it, there's a lot of gray area in here that we would need to iron out to make sure we don't do anything to give anyone power of authority they shouldn't have.
I'm not against the concept, we would just have to iron out with Mr. Strom.
Absolutely, and we'll be definitely willing to work with anybody that we need to in order to do this if at all possible. And the change, the change to our bylaws, the issue that concerns us is the ordinance sets out, it has certain things listed and our bylaws, they cannot supersede the ordinance, so just the amendment to the ordinance.
Basically, just updating our end to catch up with you guys. So I'll leave this and I'll probably sponsor something to send into the ordinance committee, introduces the business next month. All right?
Thank you, Councilman. That makes sense, clearly, and Popovskis. Councilman Fivikio.
Thank you, Council President. Sir, Mr. Parkhurst, thank you for all your effort. Are you familiar with the, you're familiar with the property that the gentleman brought up earlier?
I am indeed, he's talked to me as well as a couple of members of my commission. They have gone out and checked out the cemetery, we are all familiar with it and familiar with the property. We, I did discuss this with Ms. Malcolm at State and we all agree that we want something to be done. to be done. However, our hands are tied, and this is statewide. The general stance for the state is if it does not belong to the city, or it does not belong to the state, they will not assume liability. And we understand that, and that's where things kind of get a little bit great, because we do work there. However, we're not really assuming liability for, say, the grounds themselves. We are just trying to work to maintain the cemetery itself, take care of the stones. I mean, we have veterans in there and such, so.
Part of my question is, are those trees that he's talking about, are they really, are they close to the house? Are they really a danger? I mean...
They're over a driveway, and to my knowledge, he believes that they're in danger of falling down on the driveway, which may hurt somebody when they're there.
But, you know, although from the administration, I'm not sure that he owns that driveway. So...
Yeah, they have questions about the property lines, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Colford.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Parkers, thank you very much for your work, and I appreciate you meeting with Mr. Pycarski as I have. I guess a couple of questions for you. As I read your report, it says that Ebenezer Fuller was the last owner of that property, is that right?
For, I don't know if it's necessarily him, but there is no record of ownership. And so generally, if that's the case, it's almost always the case where it was a family plot. They owned the area, they sold off everything but the cemetery, and died off. And so it became abandoned.
Okay, and do you know that for a fact? Like, have you done that through your research?
We're trying to date any information we can to determine the last known owner of that property, but, I mean, records only go back so far. So we have not found anything showing any ownership at this point.
Okay, and just a side question, on the holes that were there, those are the ones probably to repair the stones?
Yes, so a lot of these would have bases that were sunk into the ground about maybe eight inches. Usually what happens is the ground will settle, the bases will tilt, so we dig those out, reset them, fill them back in. There's no concerns about digging that deep, don't worry.
And do you know when that work might be?
That work has been, that is actually quite recent, within the last two months or so.
Right, and do you have an anticipation of when you would finish that, be able to finish that?
It's a slow process. Many of these cemeteries, because there are so many, we're still trying to focus on a few at a time, just we're not so spread so thin, but even then, it might be a few years. So this particular cemetery is in quite rough shape. Many stones were down. I would anticipate it would be a few years to take care of this particular cemetery.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Parkers, again, thank you for your efforts. Just a thought, has anyone ever reached out to the Department of Corrections, looking for workers to maintain these properties? I know in the past, we have used some of the minimum security crews to, for example, paint Cranston Stadium for us and clean up some grounds.
That's actually a very good suggestion, Councilman. I, for that one particularly, I would tend to direct them more towards the two state-owned cemeteries that are within Cranston that are the actual penitentiary cemeteries, state cemeteries two and three, because those almost require constant maintenance, and they are so large. But I, you could definitely reach out to them. We are, as I mentioned before, we're working with Boy Scouts and definitely other groups. We learned of a troop fifty-seven which works at Cassett Cemetery and Raising Monuments for training. We're hoping to bring them into Oakland Cemetery, they do a lot of stone work there. And actually, for Oakland Cemetery, we are working, trying to work with Mr. Dogg and trying to get that place restored as well. We do understand his situation.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
I have two for you before you run away. So first, thank you for all the work you do. It's a thankless job, making sure cemeteries get what they need. Like you said, you've got to take care of the ones that came before us. My first comment is, I know you need people to help you do things. I would recommend, in the spring, reaching out to both high schools and both principals, because seniors always seem to forget that they have to do community service. And I get calls every February and March saying, "Councilman Mike, do you know anybody that needs hours, anybody that has hours for community service?" I venture to guess you could probably get thirty to forty kids on a Saturday from both high schools to clean up a big cemetery.
Absolutely. We have worked with schools a little bit in the past. I do have contacts there, as well as other community services. We have, who have been directed to us as well.
And the second one I have is, on the creation of a 401(c)(3), and this will be the thing I think we have to vet the most, is as you raise funds, how do those funds get used? We've had other commissions try to think about creating their own status, and as you fall under the auspices of the city, you are a city division in yourself, so you do not pay taxes because you are a city division. So I would, we probably have to have the lawyers look at it and see where the lines are and how we draw them, and to make sure you kind of get what you think you need, so you can raise some funds and spend it on cemeteries, and really not end up in orange.
I totally understand, Council President. Our understanding is we would still like to have our own city budget, and that would be for supplies and typical funding issues, whereas the nonprofit would go more towards recurring maintenance fees and working with outside groups, especially since many of these cemeteries are not owned by anybody. Being able to get a third party in here where now the city's not taking liability, they will assume the liability with the nonprofit funding.
I'm sure we'll have to discuss that in greater detail. I look forward to seeing your request and see how we can do to kind of manage through it.
Excellent, thank you, Council President. Thank you. Oh, Councilman Favecchio, I don't have a question, just wanted to see if we could take a brief recess before we finish. I think we can. Anybody object to a feminine recess? Let the snogger fall a second. Motion adjourned, back in five. Call the meeting back to order, thank you for allowing the brief recess. We will move on to executive communications. Director Lopez.
I will say the forum hiring of special counsel and constituents was provided in email, and I believe we each got, received a copy of that tonight. He will be asking us about advice and consent on appointment Rita Lively as a member of the Conservation Commission. Lively, Lively. Any comments on Rita as a member of the Conservation Commission? Is there a motion approved?
Motion approved, second.
A motion to second, discussion. Councilman Favecchio.
Yeah, just quickly, I noticed we've appointed three women tonight to different boards and commissions. I just, the gentleman got up and spoke about diversity, but we do our best, I think, on the council.
Thank you, Council President. Councilman Styches is saying that.
Yeah, who's this, Rita?
Director Lopez, you want to tell us who Rita is?
Makes a difference.
Councilman Styches, I apologize, but I don't have her resume with me here. I believe she was referred by another member of the Conservation Committee, Commission. If you want, I can get you that resume for your review. Well, maybe we should continue it until we see the... Sure, that's fine. I make a motion to continue. A motion to continue to the next council meeting?
I withdraw my second.
I withdraw my motion. I have a motion to continue.
Second.
In discussion, seeing none, Clark, please take the roll.
Councilman Wade.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Senator Spire.
Yes.
Senator Culver.
Yes.
Senator Vossis.
No.
Senator Favecchio.
Yes. Yes. On Captain Richard Bedard, we have a request to be continued in service for one year. Director Lopez, as Captain Bedard met all the necessary qualifications to be continued in service for one year, does the administration agree? Yes, we do, Council President, thank you. And would you like a motion to continue? Motion, I mean, motion to approve?
Motion approved, second.
A motion to second, under discussion, seeing none. Clark, please take the roll.
Councilman Wade.
Yes.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yes.
Senator Spire.
Yes.
Senator Culver.
Yes.
Senator Vossis.
Yes.
Councilman Favecchio.
Yes. Yes. There's a claim settled by the solicitor. If anyone has any questions about that claim, please direct them to the solicitor who is in attendance tonight. Seeing none, that will close the portion of executive communications. Under Council President Communications, have a happy holiday, everybody. It's coming up very quickly. It's the end of October, which is crazy how fast this year is going by. Thanksgiving is only five weeks away, so then we start with Christmas. It's really nuts. This year is almost over, and we'll be back in the silly season again in 2018. I call it the silly season because one of my predecessors used to call it that. Everyone's announcing for their intentions for the following year. It's always fun to see what happens, so I look forward to seeing all the silliness as much as the rest of you. Moving on, Councilmember Communications. Councilman Arquette is not here, so Councilman Styches will be handling Councilman Arquette's motions. Councilman Styches, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, I'll start with Paul's requesting, requested an administrative report on the highway garage break-in. I think he wanted a list of what was stolen and the value of each item.
A Councilman Styches, can you give me, we have a question for our solicitor, just for clarification purposes. Councilman Styches, would Councilman Arquette be okay with the total of the items, or does he really want an itemized list?
Well, he'd like an itemized list, and I believe that Director Strom had said at a previous meeting that that list had been provided to the insurance company.
Yeah, the issue is it came off a police report, which is still in an ongoing investigation, so for him to give this, the police report might be a little, there might be an issue. So what they're going to do is they're going to look tomorrow and see if they could either put it in a separate list, and what they can provide to the council to belay his concerns on the amount.
I can give you a ballpark figure of the value of the total items that were taken. It's around $5,000.
Five million.
And the police department is continuing an investigation into that, so until they get some clarification from legal as to what we can provide, that's where I'm going to leave it at this point.
Okay, I guess, could you say again why you can't give an itemized list of what was stolen?
Because it's part of a police report that I, that we have a copy of. I don't, because the investigation is ongoing, I'm not sure if I can release the contents of that report, yeah.
Aren't the, oh, you mean not the official police report? Like, that's public record, right? Something was stolen, they were...
Right, but the value and the description of the items, I've just got to make sure that we can release all that stuff.
Okay, and so, but I can tell you, are you contacting Councilman Arquette?
Yeah, I'll give the Councilman a call, but as I said, it's approximately $5,000 worth of value of different items that were taken.
Okay, thank you. And the other is also a public works issue to do with the crosswalk?
Yes, the area at Gladstone and Brown Street actually were just paved, and the crosswalk is going to be completed sometime by the end of the month, so we're on that.
Okay, thank you. All right, onto items that I had. A report on enforcement of ordinances at the end of Ocean Avenue. Ever since we instituted the trash barrel program and increased police monitoring of the area, we have not had any complaints of activity or any disturbances. So there haven't been any tickets, or no arrests, or... Okay, thank you. And the last thing I have on my list here was why firemen and policemen who have questions, disciplinary questions involving their work performance, they always seem to be put on leave with pay. And my experience as a union representative was that people would get disciplined without pay, they'd be sent home, and then occasionally, if the decision was reversed, they would be given back pay, if the feeling was that a mistake was made in sending them home without pay. But it seems like from the instances in the, both the police department and now the fire department, that people are put on administrative leave with pay. So if it turns out that the discipline is called for, we've already paid, we can't recoup that time that they're not working, and that they've been paid. So I just wonder why that's, why that seems to be done so much. Director Lopez, are you standing there with your thoughts?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Styches, for your inquiry. There's no clear-cut answer to your question. For a variety of contractual obligations and reasons that we have with the police and fire, those are some of the steps that we have to take in some instances, and it's determined on a case-by-case basis. Also, legal obligations, like the Police Officers Bill of Rights, allow for these type of procedures, and sometimes mandate these type of processes to be taken that way. So unfortunately, there's not a clear-cut answer as to why in every case, because each case has to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis.
Well, is there a, I know there's, that Chief Palumbo was put on administrative leave for quite some time, and there's no, he's certainly not protected by the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights as a police chief. And that ended up costing the city both several months' pay, plus it gave him an extra year on his retirement. And I'm not aware of, in the case that's been in the paper, in the fire department, that there's any fire department bill of rights, fireman's bill of rights. So does this ever happen in, say, the Public Works Department, or the Parks Department, the City Hall, that we put people on administrative leave for long periods of time?
Well, Councilman, again, your question is multi-layered and very backward-looking in terms of former Chief Palumbo. Obviously, that was a situation that was dealt with a while ago, and it's something that's over and done with in the past. As far as the current situation that we're talking about with the incident in the fire department, again, we do have a personnel director now who we turn to for their advice in these matters, and we follow their direction, which, you know, is bound by certain legal obligations and certain contractual obligations. So again, to give you a clear answer, I'm that I really can't do that because it's on a case-by-case basis.
What, do you have any idea when a decision will be made in the fire department?
In regards to, Councilman?
In regards to Mr. Valetta's status?
I believe that both participants... Right. I believe that both participants are in the process right now of an investigation, so it would be premature for us to talk about any of that.
Well, I didn't want you to talk about that. I wanted you to talk about when a decision would be made. I mean, it has been, I don't know, close to a month, maybe?
Well, you can rush justice, Councilman.
Oh, no, we wouldn't want to do that.
Not at all.
But it seems like your investigation should be complete by this, this time, and a decision should be made, rather than continuing to pay someone who's not working.
Councilman, I appreciate your diligence on, in regards to taxpayers, but we will take the necessary time that is required to do a thorough and complete investigation. We wouldn't want to rush into anything that's not appropriate, but thank you for pointing that out.
All right, and thank you for your skillful use of the English language.
Thank you. And it's my second, and it's my second language, too.
Councilman McQuarrie?
Thank you, Council President. If you'd indulge me, I apologize, sir. This was just brought to my attention, but it seems like a health issue. I'm getting reports from numerous people regarding increasing sewage treatment plant. The recent work that was performed at Aldi, a number of constituents have noticed that there's an increased smell regarding permeating from the facility itself. One has described it as ammonia bleach, formaldehyde kind of mix, and I'm wondering if the administration would be nice enough to look into this for us.
I will save him a second from standing up and speaking. If you could just email Director Lopez in the morning, he will follow up on it. That way, he might not take the, it looks like he's knee-deep in trouble with a lawyer right now, so he probably didn't hear you. But, and again, I apologize, it was just brought to my attention. No apology necessary, Councilman. This is your time to speak, and that's a serious issue that we need to get to the bottom of. Send an email, and you can see, see me on that, so I get the response.
Thank you, sir.
Councilman Manning?
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to the legal expense analysis report that was given us this evening, and I quickly added up the legal fees pertaining to Captain Gil Bowes' ongoing case. And I know, to quote Director Lopez, we're not rushing to justice yet, but it's been going on for three years. In my estimation, and I did this quickly, I'm in a calculator, but so far, legal fees from July to October, it's about $62,000 to $65,000 in addition to the last two or three years in payments to legal fees. So I want to have an update from the administration at the next council meeting to give us exactly how much we spent in legal fees on this three-year-old case. I'm sure that can be a few fairly easily, or maybe Mr. Strong can give me the figures right now, since he's standing up.
No, I just wanted to ask you, Councilman, you do have the figures that I gave you up to date to a certain point, and all we would have to do is just add this to it to update it. Am I correct?
Fine, if that's the case, then add it to it and give us a new update.
All right, as you know, that's ongoing as well.
It's ongoing for years and years, I'm well aware of it.
Chairman Favecchio, at the next Finance Committee meeting, if you could just add that to the docket for Councilman Manning. Councilman Manning, would the Finance Committee meeting be, be good or do not for council?
No, that'll be soon with the border.
Thinking about the Finance Committee?
Two weeks.
Finance Committee. Okay. If you have something to add, Director?
Discussion about our new computer system in Treasury for iCloud, and I just wanted the council to know that we had 5,000 transactions, and for the month of October, which is our second quarter of tax collection, which constituted $1.6 million. So we're all making some progress there, it's increasing, and it's, to be very frank with you, it's helped our cash flow.
Thank you, Director. Councilman Favecchio, Council Vice President Favecchio. I gotta stop doing that.
It's okay, Council President. All right, so we're gonna put GIBO on my calendar, the Finance Calendar. I'd also like to put the computerization at City Hall or for council on the calendar as well, not, not related to the Treasury issue. That's, that's been addressed, but I just wanted to...
So have a nice open debate on maybe trying to update some of the systems in this building?
Yeah, just, just so that we get ahead of the budget season.
That's a plan.
Yeah, and just one other comment with regard to Councilman Stykos' questions. There is a constitution that says you're innocent until proven guilty, so that factors into, I'm sure, every decision. We have a former police commander who is now the Personnel Director, so I'm sure he's well-versed in personnel matters. And the other thing you have to consider is the length of service of any individual. They may have thousands of, they have so many hours built up that, you know, it may, there may be more risk in not putting someone on paid leave than there would be in making it unpaid, as long as the, especially if it's, you know, not, the conduct is not so egregious that, you know, there's, there's no question about it at all. But you are innocent until proven guilty, so I think that has to be taken into consideration.
Are you gonna play nice, Councilman Stykos?
I am.
Okay, Councilman Stykos.
I'm just gonna suggest that the next time you meet someone who was fired for their job for misconduct, that you ask them if they were put on administrative leave with pay prior to their termination. It doesn't have anything to do with, with constitutional rights. There's a union contract that protects people from unfair discipline, but it doesn't say you have to put people out indefinitely on paid leave. And we've seen cases where people are put out for really long periods of time on paid leave, and it just doesn't make financial sense.
I think if you look at the police, the laws regarding the Leabour, there are some protections even with regard to that.
I understand that for Leabour.
You have to pay them during the dependency of that litigation.
But you also should be making, making decisions.
Well, we didn't have a Personnel Director to make decisions.
That was why Mr. Panalana was on leave for two years, because we didn't have a...
Okay, I got you guys going for a little bit, and... Any other Council Member Communications?
No.
There'll be none. I believe that will close the business of the evening, and we can get to old business. There is new business. Introduction of new business. Madam Clerk?
I just want to note for the record, there are two typo errors on the referrals to the Finance Committee in November. The date is actually November 6th, not the 16th. Those will be corrected. Proposed ordinance 10-1701 ratifying the school committee's collective bargaining agreement with the National Association of Government Employees. Local ally 153 custodial unit from July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020, to be referred to Finance Committee for hearing on November 6. Proposed ordinance 10-1702 ratifying the school committee's collective bargaining agreement with Rhode Island Council 94. AFSCNE, AFLCIO, on behalf of Cranston Public School employees. Local 2044 secretary unit from July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2020, to be referred to Finance for hearing on November 6. Proposed ordinance 10-1703 permitting the comprehensive plan of 2010 for Cumberland Farms intersection of Park and Lorik Avenue, to be referred to Ordinance Committee for hearing on December 7. Proposed ordinance 10-1704 amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of the City of Cranston entitled "Zoning: Change of Zone for Worthing Park Intersection," to be referred to the Ordinance Committee for hearing on December 7. Resolution that Patacure White Sox Consider the City of Cranston for the new stadium, to be referred to Ordinance Committee for hearing on November 16. Resolution urging the General Assembly to pass legislation banning guns in school, to be referred to Ordinance Committee for hearing on November 16. Request from National Bureau for Poe Location, Seven Mile Road, referred to Public Works Committee for hearing on November 16. The following claims to be heard on November 6. Personal injury claim of R. DeAndrea from alleged incident on September 5, 2017, and Barbara Aromani from alleged incident on September 7, 2017. Property damage claim of Brooke, Sarah Brooke Stevens and Joseph Millie from alleged incident on September 18, 2017, and claim of Melissa Argenti from alleged incident on October 11, 2017. That is all the new business.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council Vice President Favecchio?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, Council President, to refer all of the new business to the respective committees, with the exception, with the exception of the resolution regarding the guns in schools.
I have a motion of a second?
Second.
I have a motion of a second under discussion. Councilman Stykos?
Two things. One is a request that, is there, this to the clerk, is there any way that when, when we vote to refer things to committee, that they can then show up somehow on the agenda for the next committee meeting? Because they kind of go into Never Never Land, in that if you go to the website and you want to know what the ordinance committee is considering, until there's an official notice of the meeting, you don't know what's gonna come up. And we're gonna refer these items. You see what I mean? Because people are gonna be, people are gonna be calling me about Cumberland Farms, and they're gonna be saying...
Yeah, well, they are, the ordinances is available via the link on the council docket until the ordinance agenda is put up. The problem, honestly, it's a matter of, we usually, we send out the agenda when it's posted, those have the links for the committees, and usually it's a week before the meeting, so there is a gap in time. I mean, it's possible to put up the draft, but, but they are available electronically via the docket website.
Right, I know they're available, but, but, yeah. I don't know, maybe something you could think about, it's just, people want to know when, when, when is this gonna be considered?
Well, it's gonna be advertised. The ads will come out in this week's paper with the hearing dates, the news will go out to the abutters. I mean, I know, I understand, people want information, and it is provided, and it is out there, and it always, you know, I find it amusing when people say, you know, they're not, we're withholding notices of information, and we advertise these things three times consecutively, we send them out to the, you know, we can't go knock on people's doors and give them personal slips of when the hearings are on things of interest to them. They have a responsibility to share that information also, and we do our best to put it out there.
Yeah, I don't, maybe there could be a, when you click on the next ordinance committee meeting...
But the draft, we aren't, yeah, the only thing, the only thing we could do in is put up a tentative draft of the agenda based on what's coming out of committee until that's, until the final ones out. If, I'll discuss that with the, the Council President to see if that's something we want to do.
Okay, thank you. And the second, sorry, I thought you were done, continue. The second thing is a question for Councilman Favecchio on his motion. Why are you saying refer everything except the ordinance, the resolution on banning guns in school?
Well, it's been on the calendar seven times, I believe, and I know we have, in one of our rules, there's, if something has been tabled for an indefinite period of time or after, there's no, no action is taken, it should no longer appear on the agenda. I just don't know how many times we're gonna put it on the calendar. It keeps coming back every month. It's been about seven months, six, seven months, I think. It just keeps coming back and coming back, and it hasn't had, you know, I mean, we can debate it by a separate motion, if you like, but I thought that we'd refer everything else, and if you want to debate it, that's fine. We could, it could be, it could still be debated tonight whether it should go back on the calendar again for the seventh time, but...
Well, I'm, I believe I'm a cosponsor, and I would refer to Councilman Manning, that your question about why, why does he keep introducing it? He might have a better answer than I do.
Councilman Manning, the reason, and you all know the reason, why I keep introducing this, is because nobody in this council chambers has the courage to debate this issue. You either table it, or you don't get a second so it doesn't pass the ordinance committee. There's no debate on this. You guys bury it every single time. That's why I keep bringing it up. I think it's a debateable issue, I think it's an impregnable issue, and deals with the children of this city, and people walking around with carry concealed weapons in schools shouldn't be there. All of this is a resolution, it's a request to the General Assembly, it's not an ordinance that we're making. We're asking the General Assembly to look at this. That's all I'm asking for, is an honest debate on this, and you council people will not give it. I don't know why. I know several of you have a handgun carrying permit, maybe that's the reason, maybe you're taking money from the IRA or some organization. How dare you? How dare, how dare, how dare me? You have a lot of nerve. You have a lot of nerve, sir. You accuse members of this council of taking money, sir? I accuse members of this council from not debating an issue that's important to the citizens of this city. That's who I accuse the name.
We can debate, we can debate that, but you just said, maybe...
You're out of order, sir. I'm the Council President. I accuse members of this council for taking money, sir. I did not, I said not.
He said...
Shut the gun, as usual.
Let's take a, let's take a vote on this motion.
Councilman Manning?
No.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
Councilman Stykos?
No.
Councilman McQuarrie?
No.
Councilman Holberg?
Yes.
Councilman Favecchio?
Yes.
Councilman President?
Yes.
Motion, Council.
Councilman Stykos? I make a motion to refer the resolution on banning guns in schools to the Ordinance Committee.
Second, I have a motion of a second under discussion. Councilman Favecchio?
Thank you, Council President. I have a question to the sponsors, cosponsors, I guess. Since this is such a targeted issue, you're talking about concealed carry permit holders only, so you're not talking about the general population, you're only talking about, you know, a limited number of people who have legitimate licenses, and since 90% of the employees of the school department are teachers and administrators, are you concerned about the stability of our teachers and administrators that have the right to carry a gun? I'm just wondering what the perceived threat is from people that have gone through a tremendous amount of disclosure and scrutiny, as opposed to the fact that we have open grounds, no one's there to check whether, whether someone has a gun anyway. I mean, it's just, I don't know what, what concern you're addressing. That's, that's my question to you.
Councilman Hopkins?
I just find it, being my first caller on sitting on the council, I'm highly offended by the comments directed towards myself personally and other members of the council about our lack of courage. Being 63 years old and spending 40 years of my life working in this city, I challenge anyone to question my courage, and I'm highly offended by the lack of professionalism by a member of this council to question anyone that has that type of unprofessionalism to question our courage. I think it's highly unprofessional.
Councilman Stykos, you next, sir.
Well, I'd like to say to Councilman Hopkins that we've had a number of controversial issues before you came to the council, when the Democrats were in the majority, and we always had a discussion, and we always took a vote. And one of the things when people, when people ask me about how the council was going, I used to say, it's not like Washington, because we sit next to people of the other party, and you can really, you can put forth any idea that you have, and you get a discussion, and you get a vote, and then it's done. and you get a vote, and then it's done. But this issue, this issue, we don't get a vote. And I agree with Councilman May. I don't understand why, if you guys, your argument is so wonderful that people ought to be walking around school with guns, then you don't have the courage to defend your own position. But instead, what you're doing is using your status as the majority party to squash debate on this subject. So, you know, if you resent the comment that you don't have the courage, well then, make a second for the purposes of discussion, this resolution, and let's have a discussion. And other than you're scared to have a discussion, I really don't understand, or I guess another possibility is someone told you this is how you should vote, and you're following instructions. I really don't understand why you won't have a discussion on this. One issue that we talked about that was frankly not in the interests of the Democratic Party was the eliminating the master lever. And Don Bots put in that resolution to urging the General Assembly to eliminate the master lever, and it was defeated. And you know what Don Bots did? He put the resolution in a second time. Nobody tried to knock it off the agenda. It was seconded in committee, and you know what? It passed, with a lot of Democratic support, as I recall. So let's make a commitment to the democratic process. Let's make a commitment to listening to each other. You know, you might even change your opinion. But if you shut down debate on any subject, you're not following the democratic procedure that we have in this country that we're so fortunate to have. You know, your car is not gonna blow up tonight. Nobody's gonna try to kidnap your kids in this country because of your political views, because we sit here, and we talk to each other, and we disagree, and we're passionate, and then we take a vote, and we're done with it until another time. And that's what ought to happen. But when you can't, you don't have the opportunity to discuss and get a vote on something, it's very upsetting.
Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, Council President. It's the lack of professionalism with the comments that really irritated me. Personally, nobody's gonna tell me how to vote on anything. I'm an educated, adult man. Nobody's gonna come and force me to say yes or no on anything. I'm gonna make my own decisions, and I'm gonna stick with it, regardless of what people of the other party might think. I personally have an opinion on this issue, but I don't think it should be done here in these chambers. I think it's a state issue. It's not our decision to make. And that's where I stand.
Councilman McQuarrie, you haven't spoken yet.
Thank you, Council President. I'm not making any accusations to anyone here. I have too much respect for all of you. What I do ask, though, is that we can at least send this to committee, just so that we can get it off the agenda every month. If we can just get this debate done, I just want to get over this and move on. And if we can just send this to committee, listen, let everyone say this piece, take a vote, and then move on. That's my solution. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Paploskas.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. Well, first of all, I respect all you guys, everybody in here. You guys mean the world to me, I hope you know that. Secondly, I just want to say that we, you know, Councilman McQuarrie, it has gone to committee. It's been on the ordinance docket since May. This would be another month. And then, next month, if there's a vote up, down, it could come back again, and come back again, and come back again. So it, we have a lot of business that's coming to the ordinance committee. I feel like it's gonna be obstructing a lot of business that's coming down the road. When it is a state issue, Councilman Hopkins is very eloquent, saying that this is a state issue. This is a resolution. Whether this votes up, down, left or right, it's not gonna change anything. It's a state issue. So, you know, I respect everyone here, and I just wanted to say my two cents. Thank you.
Right, Councilman Hopkins. Councilman Colford.
Thank you, Council President. You know, I just, I have to weigh in here and admit, I agree with Councilman Paploskas that this is a state issue. The state legislature has not talked about this. I don't know that we have the influence or the ability to move the state legislature in that direction. But, you know, it's my understanding, when this first started back at the beginning of the year, that we did discuss it. And then it's come up continually, again, and again, and again. And I don't, I guess, clearly see where this direction is going if we continue to put it on month after month after month. By what point does it become, you know, just in the way of what we're trying to do in terms of accomplishing things for the city? So that's just kind of how I feel about it at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman McQuarrie. I've had a chance to speak once. I will invoke that rule, and I will use my chance to speak now, and that will close comments from the council. A lot of comments remain about this being a state issue, which it is. This has come before this body seven times. The first month it was debated, and a motion to table was made after that debate. It sat on the table for three months. We put it on the table, in the hopes that the General Assembly would then bring it back for them. They did not. At that meeting, as Council President, I said, if a law comes back to the General Assembly that we can debate, the merits of, we can have a discussion. This has come back every month since. To have a discussion with no state law to talk about. I didn't like the last state law that we were discussing. I didn't like the way it imposed fines and what it did. I didn't like how it was being introduced. It wasn't being phased in. There were flaws with that law. And if they release a law in January, when they get back to business, that makes sense? I would consider having a debate on that law. But with no law in place, the only thing debating is policy. So if we want to have a debate, and the General Assembly decides to call out a law, I would be open to that. And I think if this was to come back at that point, we can have all the pro people, all the anti people, everybody from the Cranston Action Network, everybody from the 2A group to come here and have a real debate. But what's happening now is a one-sided policy debate. And I think it's disrespectful to the constituents of this city to continue to have something on the docket with no state law that we can debate, because then you just have people coming to council to talk and give us their opinions when we can't take an actual vote. So I would suggest that if a law comes up that is debatable, we can then debate it. And I would never, in the six years I have been on this council, ever, ever accuse another councilperson of taking money for a vote, ever. And the fact that you use the word "may" really doesn't make it a non-acusation. You're making the simulation that for some reason we took money from the 2A commission, and we're making a vote on that. So, Councilman, if you want to apologize to that, that's about all I'm liable to say.
I should not apologize, and I would like to make one comment. I didn't say exactly what you just said. I said "may." I, "may" is a different than "is."
Now, so you made an accusation, so I don't, we're spying. May, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman May?
No.
Councilman Hopkins?
Yes.
The Chair of District, this is a motion to record the resolution to committee.
So, Councilman May, I assume you wanted to make a yes vote, Councilman Hopkins, and no vote, but I'm not gonna put words in your mouth.
If Councilman Hopkins wants to vote yes, I'll vote yes for him.
Well, you voted no already, so, yes.
Councilman Hop?
No.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman McQuarrie?
Yes.
Councilman Colford?
No.
Councilman Paploskas?
No.
Councilman Favecchio?
No.
Councilman...
No. You say motion withdrawn. So moved. Second, on favor?
Aye.